It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222, your emails at randykabc@gmail.com, and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. Well, now that we are less than a year away from the election, we're less than, we're just about six months away from the primary, we are trying to make an effort to get to know the candidates, get to know the people running. We tell you constantly that you're going to need to vote differently if you want a different government. Well, then we're going to have to do our job in letting you know who is running to be those different candidates. We're covering state elections, we're covering county elections, and of course, we're covering city elections. We'll cover any of the smaller cities, but of course, we're going to be covering the city of Los Angeles and the LA City Council, which I cover so extensively. Today, we're talking to someone who is running for LA City Council in District Seven. That's the district that is currently run by Monica Rodriguez, and it's the northern parts of the San Fernando Valley. Tony Rodriguez, welcome to KABC.
Thank you so much, Randy. Glad to be here.
All right. So Tony, first things first, introduce yourself. Tell us all about yourself, who you are, and why you decided you're running for office.
Well, again, my name is Tony Rodriguez. I am a 26-year Army veteran. I live in Solent de Hanga area. I've been married for 45 years. I'm a grandfather, which is very important to me, and I volunteer in my community a lot, whether it's cleanups, you know, go to our neighborhood council meetings, whatever I can do to help the local community. And the reason I'm running is the last three and a half years, it's been, as we all know, terrible in California, specifically in Los Angeles. We don't have any transparency. We don't have the leaders leading. We have them, when something is positive, they stand in front and take all the credit for it. When something's negative, they just stand behind the line and blame everybody else for their failures. So I think we need to change, and I think we need normal, common sense, common ground people to run for office.
Oh, I think everyone listening would agree with that. We've seen way too many career politicians who use the LA City Council as the next step on the merry-go-round that is term limits in the state of California.
Absolutely. And it's scary that we keep allowing them.
That's the thing. And you see how low voter participation is in some of these small elections, and it's very easy for incumbents and the entrenched to be able to get through where so few people are paying attention to what's going on. Let's talk about your district specifically. What would you say are the good things and the not-so-good things that have been done by your current representation with Monica Rodriguez?
Well, I mean, she's done some good things for probably the people that live in the ranch homes to some extent. She's done great with parades and events in the Pacoima area, but she's forgotten that there's more than Pacoima in her district. You know, we have Solent de Hanga, we have Silmar, we have Lakeview Terrace, we have the Tuna Canyon, where she's kind of neglected, doesn't show up for events, for whatever reason. You know, I'm not sure what her concern is. She's just not very present in our area. She's got her nature of people that she likes to coddle or perpetuate to, but she forgets that she has a full district. And that's kind of concerning. And I'll give you an example. Our neighborhood council here in Solent de Hanga is not allowed to use her office for neighborhood council meetings, for whatever reason. I'm not sure what her reason behind it is, but I think it's unfair. There's an office that is paid by the taxpayers, and the neighborhood council is not even able to use that. So the other thing she hasn't done so well is just be present and be transparent with us on what's going on. She likes to take credit when things are going great, but when things go wrong, finger pointing begins. And she's been there long enough. I'm not sure why she keeps hanging around, but we need to change, like everything in life. Like I said, I spent 26 years in the Army, and in the Army, you get transferred every three to four years. The reason they do that is because we need fresh ideas, fresh views, how to do things, how to accomplish things. And the part of a leader is to coach and mentor all these people that are coming up behind you, and we don't do a good job of that, at least in the city of LA.
We're speaking with Tony Rodriguez. He's running for LA City Council in District Seven. His website is tonythe number four citycouncil.com, and you can see what he is all about. If you ask the average person who lives in Los Angeles, what is the biggest problem facing the city, I'm sure most of them would say it's homelessness. And it's something that many current electeds have run on, including the mayor, Karen Bass. She ran on the platform of declaring an emergency on homelessness day one. And then last week, she quietly declared that that emergency was over. Tony, how would you grade the city's handling of the homelessness crisis?
Well, it's a failure. I mean, it's obviously a failure. You know, pointing fingers at LaSalle and other organizations, other nonprofits, and other NGOs is ridiculous, because at the end of the day, it falls on the leadership, and they've done a poor job of that. Building new homes or their fake affordable housing program, that's not going to help our homeless people, right? We need to address the core issues that we have, that they have. They might have a drug issue. We need to try to help with that. Instead of spending money on building an $800,000 studio, maybe get them some treatment, some therapy. And if they have a mental disability, we need to help with that, right? Because if we don't help with what really caused their homelessness, they're just going to go back on the street anyway. So we need to do more than we're doing. We have the money. If you look at what they're spending on homeless, it's ridiculous. The price of affordable housing is ridiculous in LA, as you know. And there's issues with that. And I'll tell you, in LA, I'm very aware that everything that we build as an affordable housing falls under, I'm just going to call it a labor agreement that the city makes with contractors. They don't shop around for the cheapest contractor. They just give it to whoever is in good terms with whatever public official is in office for. Those labor agreements double or triple the cost of building the same thing that maybe a smaller construction company could build for us. But we don't do it that way. We'd rather spend all this money and then call it affordable housing, and I think it's what, 10% of it is affordable housing and the rest is not? So that's not going to help our homelessness either. So we just don't address what the core issues are. We just keep, I don't want to use the word tap dancing, but I'm going to use tap dancing around the issue and blaming somebody else for it.
Well, and not only that, when you talk about the term affordable housing, it is a misleading term, because what we're really talking about is subsidized housing. And who's paying those subsidies? A lot of it's coming from our tax dollars, and it's coming from the city, or it's coming from artificially higher rents for everyone else that's not in the lottery-given affordable housing.
Absolutely. And, you know, there's no transparency, as you know, right? Especially with city council and the mayor's office. And we need to, you know, there's Mr. Mejia, who's the controller, who, I don't have a lot in common with him, but what I do like is the fact that he is posting things about where the money's going on his page, on social media. And it's upsetting the leadership, the city council and the mayor's office, because he's actually showing where the money's going. We need transparency, because maybe, just maybe, they should start listening to people with common sense, instead of whoever they're listening to out there.
We're speaking with Tony Rodriguez. He's running for LA City Council in District Seven. That's the northern parts of the San Fernando Valley and Sunset and Tahunga, excuse me, Sunland and Tahunga. One of the other major issues, if you were to ask about people in Los Angeles, what we're facing here, it's public safety, it's crime, and it's a severe shortage of LAPD officers. We have such bad attrition here, and recruiting takes so long, the academies take so long, and because our hiring process is so feel of bureaucracy, people graduate from the academy, and then they take a signing bonus to go across town to Burbank, or to Beverly Hills, or across the state to Alameda. What do you think you would be able to do to fix that problem, turn that around?
You know, I think in order to help it, we're going to need help from the city council people. And we need to sit down and have a common sense, common ground meeting, activity, conversations about what we're going to do with the money. First of all, I think LAPD is under 9,000 police officers now. That's not going to help us here in Los Angeles, right? And I recently found out that they close police stations at 9:00 PM at night because they don't have people to man the desk. Not sure why we don't. Part of it is because, you know, the budget's been cut. Police officers, you're right, they quit. The recruiting process, if you mention LA, people don't want to come here because of what happens, because police are always in trouble. They're always being, I don't want to say told or bad, but you're not doing a good job, or US thugs, or you're racist, and you're profiling. And it's not true. Of course, there's some bad people in every job out there, but for the most part, most police officers just want to do their job, and they don't want to be told that what they did is bad, or their information released because they did something and the families get attacked. What I would do is sit down with city council, and this is why we need to have, we need to get over our politics when it comes to municipal government, because we need to do what's best for the community, for the city of LA. We've got to have some common sense and common ground. We can't be, continue to be split over the red and blue at our municipal level. We need to sit down and have conversations. And I know in the past, and I'll speak with somebody that I spoke to a couple of times back, Dennis Zine, he said when they needed money for the LAPD, he sat down and he got six city council people to work with him, so they can bring extra money for LAPD. So there's things that we can do. We just don't want to do it because everybody gets caught up with they're a DSA member, or they don't agree with you because you are a Republican, or they don't agree because you're a Democrat. We need to get over that when it comes to municipal and city governments. It's nonpartisan. Let's just do what's best for LA. That's all that should matter. And we need to sit down and figure out a way, having conversations and finding money, because there is money to be found, and I'll give you an example in a second, Randy, and give it to the police, and make sure that they have enough civilians working in their police stations to answer the phones, so that we can put more patrols out in streets. It's just a common sense approach that we're just not using. We're letting personal feelings and emotions get involved of solving the problem. And by what I was going to tell you about the money, so we had a parade in San Fernando this weekend, no, yesterday for Veterans Day, and they were almost going to cancel it because they needed $37,000, which they didn't think about before the parade. But three city council people actually sat down and miraculously found $37,000 for the parade for veterans. So where's the will that's away? It's just having the moral courage to do it.
Well, and speaking of, you know, trying to find money and where's the budget, look what happened earlier this year, where at the beginning of the year, the city administrative officer said that we are facing a billion-dollar budget deficit from lower hotel revenues, from lawsuits, from borrowing too much, from the rainy day fund, and from a whole bunch of different things. And then Karen Bass comes out with a plan, okay, we're going to need to lay off 1,600 people. Then a few months later, the city council plays with it, okay, we're just going to need to lay off about 600 people. Then a couple of months ago, Karen Bass says, oh, magically, we don't have to lay anybody off. We figured it out, but we are raising fees all across the board on trash fees for homeowners, on sewer fees for homeowners. Is there a way to balance the budget with the city without making it even more expensive to live here for the average person?
Well, I think, again, it comes down to electing people with common sense and common ground, right? Kind of like my budget at home. I sit with my wife, we discuss what we can afford and what we can't afford, how we're going to spend our money. It doesn't happen in city council, right? It doesn't even happen at the state level. They just want to spend money like it's, you can print it in a machine and just give it away to people. We need to have people in office that treat that money like it's their own money. If we can't afford, and I like to use the Disneyland thing, right? I have two granddaughters. If I can't afford to take them both to Disneyland, we're not going to go right now. We're going to try to save money and go at a later date. Or if we can't go to a fancy restaurant, my wife and I won't go to a restaurant, right? So there's got to be people in office that we elect that have a common sense approach and are willing to talk to us, because that's another thing. I think they owe us a conversation, at least every quarterly, to come to our district, our cities, and have a town hall. Hey, what's going on in Solent de Hanga? How can I help you? You know, I've been doing this in Silmar. What are your major concerns, right? Come talk to us and ask us. Maybe we have the solution that you haven't thought of, right? And so there's a lot of just disconnect with what's happening in the world today. And a lot of it is because we just don't talk. We just don't want to talk about it. And I think one thing I will do when I get elected is I will have town hall meetings. Good, bad, or indifferent, I'll take all the heat rounds they want to send my way, because that would be my job, to be their leader, and to do what I can to make their life a lot better.
A major issue that was voted on at the LA City Council today was the updating to Los Angeles' rent stabilization ordinance, where this group, Abundant Housing LA, for the past year and a half, has been pushing this idea of cap the rent at 3%. It didn't go that far, but it's going to make it a lot harder for mom-and-pop landlords to be able to operate in the city of Los Angeles. So many have already sold and moved on after the eviction moratoriums throughout COVID. Where do you weigh in on that debate?
Well, I think it's kind of, we need to look at both sides, right? We need to look at the property owners that are renting, because what the city doesn't consider into all this is all the fees and the taxes they attach to the property owners, right? They don't put that into, you know, they're only protecting the renters, and not that I don't want to protect renters, but it has to be fair, right? So if you raise, whether it's, you know, trash, or water, or electricity on the property owners, and they're the ones paying for that, then they should be allowed to raise the rent accordingly, not a certain percentage, right? So it has to be twofold. We got to look at what we're doing to the property owners and landlords versus what we're doing to the renters, because we keep placating to special interest groups, smaller groups, and we don't take care of the many. We always keep taking care of the few and not the many. And that's one of the biggest problems we have. Whether it's the city, whether it's the state, that's some of the issues that we have here.
We're speaking with Tony Rodriguez. He's running for LA City Council, District Seven, the northern parts of the San Fernando Valley. The website is tonythe number four citycouncil.com. About a year ago, the LA City Council made headlines by officially codifying their status as a sanctuary city, making sure that they did not cooperate with federal law enforcement. We have seen ICE raids all throughout the summer, and one of the things that immigration enforcement says is they need to conduct these raids because of our sanctuary status, where we don't let them into the jails. Do you support LA's sanctuary city status?
No, I do not, Randy. I don't support that at all. And we always, again, keep making excuses why we do certain things. We got to make sure that we track down all the people that are here that are criminals, and we need to get rid of them. But I also believe this, Randy. We have, I think it's over 11 million people out there that are considered illegal immigrants, and we need to do something to solve that issue on the other side. So I'm going to give you an example. There's companies out there, whether they're in California or in other states, that do something called E-Verify. When somebody gets hired, they fill out an I-9 form, and E-Verify is a system that is free for employers, that you can go in there and check to see if that employee is legal in the US in order to work, right? If we start using that program that the federal government has, that's going to cut down on illegal immigration, and it's going to cut down on these issues that we have now, because now employees won't be able to hire somebody who's not legal, once you're in that program. It's free, and it helps. And then on the other hand is, we need to take over the immigration program at the federal level, like they're doing now, but take it another step. We need to make sure that we offer people that are here illegally the opportunity to apply for at least a temporary employment card. We do that for people from Venezuela, we do it with Haiti. We need to just do it across the board, and give them a timeframe. Okay, you have two years on a temporary employment card to work in the US. We'll come back and check on you in two years, you know, to see if you committed any crime. And if you haven't, then we're going to allow you to apply for permanent residency in the US. Not citizenship, permanent residency, right? That means that they can legally work, they'll pay taxes. I know they pay taxes, but they're using somebody else's social security number when they're paying taxes here and they're illegal. So this way, it's a legal process for everybody. Everybody should be happy. We'll get rid of the bad people, and the good people will stay in the US. And at some point, they'll become US citizens, and it'll decrease the problem we have with illegal immigration.
Tony Rodriguez, you can go to the website and learn more about his campaign. It's tonythe number four citycouncil.com. He's running for LA City Council, District Seven. That is Silmar, Mission Hills, Pacoima, Lakeview Terrace, Sunland, and Tahunga. Tony Rodriguez, thank you so much for spending some time with us.
Thank you so much, Randy. I appreciate your time, and let's get the message out to everybody that we need to change.
All right. Let's talk again soon. Thanks so much for calling in. 800-222-5222 is the telephone number, 1-800-222-5222. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. It is the News Blitz with Randy Wang on Talk Radio 790 KABC. We're here every single day from five to six talking about the local issues that matter to you most, and taking your phone calls at 800-222-KABC, 1-800-222-5222, your emails at randykabc@gmail.com, and search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. Well, I mentioned it with our interview with Tony Rodriguez, who's running for LA City Council, but I don't know if you're aware, the homeless emergency is over. Karen Bass quietly, on a Friday, declared that there is no more homeless emergency, despite, you know, what we all see on the streets every day. Why did this happen? Well, let's give it a listen. Here's Fox 11.
Well, new at 10, LA Mayor Karen Bass has officially ended the city's state of emergency on homelessness. She says the declaration brought significant progress over the past two years, but
That's debatable.
But not everyone is on board with the decision to lift it. Fox 11's Chelsea Edwards. She's live in downtown with reaction tonight. Chelsea?
Well, Marla, this is a move that some city council members have been pushing for for quite some time now. There is some concern over how it's going to impact the fight against the homelessness crisis here in Los Angeles.
On her first day in office, LA Mayor Karen Bass declared a state of emergency on homelessness. Now, nearly two years later, she's lifting it. In a letter to
Mission accomplished?
In a letter to the city council, Bass said the state of emergency gave the authority to take bold and swift action to upend the failed status quo, and that it worked.
Well, again, that's debatable. One of the things a state of emergency can do is make sure that you spend a whole bunch of money without any oversight.
For the first time ever, homelessness has decreased for two consecutive years in LA, including a 70% drop in street homelessness. Let me be clear, the crisis remains, and so does our urgency. Every day, we will
But it's no longer an emergency. Okay. It's the urgent care level of a problem now.
Every day, we will continue to be on the streets, engaging with people living in encampments and RVs, bringing people inside safe, and restoring neighborhoods across Los Angeles. The mayor's decision comes after months of city council pushback, with some members arguing the emergency powers lacked transparency and limited public oversight of contracts and spending.
You mean like how we're spending $17,000 per person per month to be in a motel room for Inside Safe? Yeah, there must be a better way to do this. Have you ever noticed, by the way, I was thinking about this today, for all the money that this city wastes on homelessness, all the money that this city wastes on the concept of affordable housing and all this other nonsense, how many properties for, you know, take the, you know, billion dollars a year that's in Karen Bass's could the city have just bought and then turned them into, I don't know, like the old-school projects, public housing, where you can just rent them out to whatever you think is affordable? But no, when there's grift, you don't buy anything. As the city also doesn't want to be liable for any of this, but you notice the city never wants to take it on and like, go ahead and just buy a bunch of property. And no, what they do is they master lease, so these motel operators are getting paid for rooms that would be vacant, and the service providers are getting so much money that it's insane that we're spending as much money as we're spending and not getting any results. Also, we're just shoving people in motel rooms, and they ended up staying there. Karen Bass was shocked how much longer people are in this interim housing, because they didn't get to go to permanent supportive housing. It's all a grift.
Councilmember Tim McOscar was one of them. Emergency powers are designed to allow the government to suspend rules and respond rapidly when the situation demands it. But at some point, those powers must conclude, and the city must return to operations under the charter. But not everyone agrees with ending it.
This could hurt the momentum we've seen.
Oh, boy.
Jennifer Hart Dietz is the CEO of People Assisting the Homeless, or PATH, a nonprofit dedicated to ending homelessness for more than 40 years. She says the declaration helped cut through red tape.
I'm worried that it's going to hurt
It made sure more money went to her nonprofit without anybody looking.
I'm worried that it's going to hurt the mission to end homelessness, because, you know, by being able to have this emergency declaration, we were able to fast-track things that we know, you know, can take longer, such as building affordable housing and permitting. For the majority of people who are experiencing homelessness, this is an economic crisis. The cost of housing has gone up so much in Los Angeles, and we haven't seen, you know, the pay at the same scale. I think it's really important.
I don't think that's what this is. I think if you ask the average person in LA, they wouldn't say that's what this is. No, it's just that people haven't gotten enough raises, and that's why they're on the streets screaming at the sky. Sure. You know what? We're done with her. Since the emergency is over, let's check in on the homelessness situation in Los Angeles. Let's start with Cheviot Hills. Here's Fox 11.
First, a new homeless shelter is set to open soon in Cheviot Hills, despite a federal investigation into the property that has already led to one arrest.
Oh, this is one of the Billisaly arrests.
Good evening to you. I'm Susan Harrisuna. Fox 11's Matthew Seedorf is live outside the property tonight after speaking exclusively with concerned neighbors. This is a story you'll see only on Fox 11. Matthew?
Well, Susan, a lot of people in this area are watching this situation very closely. This is the building that everyone is focused on. It will house at least 70 people and is set to open soon. The controversial building in Cheviot Hills tied to a federal investigation now on track to become a new homeless shelter.
We believe that it should be stopped, at least during the federal investigation.
Last month, federal agents arrested
Why do we have to, and this is something that was originally an Eric Garcetti idea, we've all got to have some skin in the game. So instead of, I don't know, centralizing the problem, getting a waiver from the government to, I don't know, recommission one of our abandoned hospitals, put everyone into treatment and triage, because that's what they need, no, what we need to do is bridge home shelters in every single council district, because these are our neighbors. They're from here. How many of them are actually from the neighborhood that they're in now?
Last month, federal agents arrested real estate executive Stephen Taylor accused of bank fraud, identity theft, and money laundering. Investigators say Taylor used fake bank records and bogus lines of credit to buy what was then a senior living facility for $11 million.
And then he sold it for double to a nonprofit.
About a week later, Taylor then sold it to the Weingart Center for $27 million, a stunning $16 million profit.
I love that this guy got caught, but how many of this stuff goes around undetected or is just shady enough to be legal?
Where is that money? Where is the $16 million in profit? That was intended to be used for homeless housing, and it seems to have been diverted.
Despite the arrest, renovations continue inside the building, and Weingart's plans to house more than 70 homeless people.
We feel like we've been completely left in the dark about this entire situation.
Neighbors frustrated described the area as quiet, with lots of families just blocks from Palms Elementary School.
Yeah, why, oh, why do we need to keep putting homeless shelters in neighborhoods with kids and schools? Because just because it is a shelter instead of an encampment doesn't mean that it is safe. We've seen what happens to these areas. Blight increases, crime increases, and also more tents congregate. The whole plan with the bridge home shelters was, okay, we're going to build this in your neighborhood, but we're going to make sure no tents are allowed. And that wasn't enforced at all.
A lot of the things that we hold really dear in this neighborhood, that we've worked so hard for to create community, it looks just very unshaky right now.
No one is responding to our messages. We've been calling for meetings, and we just feel that as a neighborhood, we're being ignored.
A spokesperson for LA City Councilmember Katie Yaroslavsky says they're outraged by the fraud allegations, adding, "Los Angeles faces an urgent need for safe, well-managed housing for unhoused older adults."
Oh, boy.
The council member remains focused on ensuring the Shelby site is operated responsibly.
There's billions of dollars unaccounted for. Local and state officials cannot give us answers.
A federal task force continues investigating across California for fraud and misuse of homeless funds.
We're in a family-filled residential neighborhood. There are plenty of more appropriate sites.
Why do we have to put it there? What is so wrong with putting this problem, centralizing in a place where it's not going to harm everybody?
The mayor's office tells me tonight that The mayor's office tells me tonight that housing is very important in this part of LA, but looking at the property, it seems like construction is almost complete. No word on when this will open. We're live tonight. Matthew Seedorf, Fox 11 News.
There's the homeless situation in Cheviot Hills. When we come back, we'll check in on the homeless situation in Marina Del Rey. It's a homeless roundup, everybody, although that would be a better idea. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. If you'd like to email us, you could do so at randykabc@gmail.com. Roger writes in and says, Karen Bass is lying about the homelessness crisis so they don't lose the World Cup or the Olympics. I have a feeling there's some truth to what he's saying. And I have a feeling that if the International Olympic Committee and LA 2028 paid a little more attention to what's going on with the homeless crisis in the Sepulveda Basin where they want to hold three different Olympic events in an area that has been on fire 250-plus times this year, I wouldn't put any events there. That seems like a massive, massive risk. A lot of those were in the summer, too. When we come back, more in the homelessness roundup. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC as we continue another homelessness roundup. Fox 11 went to Marina Del Rey when there's a massive homeless encampment. Any Olympic events there?
Only on Fox 11 tonight, growing fear and frustration in Marina Del Rey over a massive homeless encampment that's thriving along the 90 freeway. Neighbors say they're being burglarized, looted, even attacked. Fox 11's Matthew Seedorf, he's live in our neighborhood there, close to the 90 freeway with more tonight. Matthew?
Well, residents say that they've
At the freeway that Karen Bass originally wanted to demolish and turn into a park and then the blowback was so big that she had to reverse course on that one?
Well, residents say that they've seen this encampment grow in recent years, spilling into their neighborhood and they worry it's going to get worse. A massive homeless encampment along the 90 freeway in Marina Del Rey, spilling all sorts of problems into nearby neighborhoods.
Shooting up drugs right there.
Illegal drug use, burglaries. And late last month, this fire and the area surrounded by dry brush.
Oh, boy. It's almost like we haven't learned any lessons.
Palisades 2.0 that is ready to explode right now on our entire community.
New drone video shared exclusively with Fox 11 shows the scale of the problem. How many people do you estimate are living over there?
One day I can see 150.
Whoa!
Some days there's only 30.
Tents, mounds of trash, a possible chop shop for bikes, and occasional violence.
I woke up one night hearing somebody trying to break into my garage.
This morning, there were three elderly residents in our community that were apparently attacked.
Just sort of making the place feel a little less safe.
That emergency's over? I don't know about that.
We were with Governor Gavin Newsom last summer as he cleared a similar encampment in LA County. Did you like to see other city officials doing this in LA?
Look, every single day until we turn this thing around.
And urged local leaders to do the same or risk losing state funding.
You've indicated that you want to clear them off of state lands. Here is two locations that I could use your help with.
LA Councilwoman Tracy Park has sent two letters to the governor this last year asking for help clearing the Marina Del Rey encampment.
The property is Caltrans property, which means it's state-owned property.
Oh, here we go. It's the finger pointing again. This is what people, the average person hates about government. Okay, there's a clear danger here. People are getting hurt. They're getting robbed. There's the danger of fire. Oh, it's not our jurisdiction. We can't do anything about it. It's the state property. Oh, no, that's federal property. Nobody cares. Just clean it up.
Meaning the city does not have the right of way to actually go in there and clear it.
What would happen if you just did though and sent the state of California the bill? Because that's what San Jose's doing.
Fox 11 contacted Newsom's office Monday, who forwarded us to Caltrans. A spokesperson there says next week they'll start clearing dry brush at the site in Marina Del Rey while closing the encampment along State Route 90 on November 19th, giving notice 48 hours in advance to allow for social service outreach to persons experiencing homelessness.
It's all so irritating. How about it's dangerous to have this crap under a freeway, any freeway? We're at the two-year anniversary of the 10 freeway melting. Anyone remember that one?
So crews next week are expected to go out there and clear out that dry brush as well as the encampment. Neighbors say they're anxious to see it. We're live tonight in Marina Del Rey. Matthew Seedorf, Fox 11 News.
The Times, Matthew, thank you.
Meanwhile, in San Jose, their mayor has been more proactive. And you know what they did? They said, you know what? I don't care if it's Caltrans land. We're going to clean it up and send you the bill. Here's NBC in the Bay.
Right now, San Jose City crews are about two hours into a cleanup on state property. It's part of the new agreement with Caltrans where the city will do the work and the state will foot the bill.
This is how it should work. If Caltrans doesn't have time to clean up all the homeless encampments on their property, I don't care whose property it is. You're all local government. Work together. And if you can't, do what Matt Mahan is doing. Clean it up anyway.
It also ends
Because ultimately, the voter, the citizen, they don't know what's Caltrans land, nor do they care. They see blight in their neighborhood and they want it cleaned up.
It also ends years of infighting over who is responsible for clearing camps along freeway underpasses. NBC Bay Area's Chris Sanchez joins us live from San Jose. She's got a look at the impact the mayor says this will have and trying to get people off of the streets. How's it going out there, Chris?
Best big city mayor in California, Matt Mahan.
Well, hi there, Laura. So you'll see the work that's happening here behind me. This is mostly beautification. It is landscaping work along the freeway, but the agreement that makes this work possible by city crews is the same one that should make it easier for the city to do outreach at encampments on Caltrans property. The area in red is today's cleanup area. It is along Highway 87 near the Julian Avenue off-ramp near downtown San Jose and near San Pedro Square Market. Mayor Matt Mahan, along with city workers and volunteers, planted oleander shrubs. They picked up trash and cut down weeds in
This is what government's supposed to be doing. Not pointing fingers, just cleaning up the damn mess.
In one of 13 areas where Caltrans authorized the city to do that maintenance. Here's a contrast with the side that the city hasn't taken over yet. Well, Caltrans did set aside $400,000 to reimburse the city for the work under a delegated maintenance agreement.
We will prevent those sprawling encampments from accumulating thousands of pounds of trash. We'll prevent the weeds from getting so high that then we have a fire that damages something nearby. Prevention is so much more effective in terms of quality of life for everybody, but in the long run, in terms of saving money as well.
Yeah, I'm a little jealous that that's not my mayor.
Now, another one of those 13 sites is on First Street near the Highway 280 underpass, and that includes an encampment. There, the city will now be able to send in outreach teams without having to ask the state for permission, according to
No more, you know, do the old thing that they talk about in the entertainment business. Ask for forgiveness, not permission. What's the state going to do? And I'm talking to every member of the city council, including Tracy Park, who I'm a fan of. What's the state going to do? If you've got dangerous homeless encampments under the 90 freeway, I don't care that it's Caltrans property. Clean it up. If they don't want to pay for it, put them on blast. Say that this was their dereliction of duty, but regardless, clean it up. I don't care whose jurisdiction it is. You don't care whose jurisdiction it is. And the homeless certainly don't care whose jurisdiction it is. So clean it up. Thank you all so much for listening to this show. If you ever miss an episode, you can go to kabc.com or search for the KABC News Blitz wherever you get your podcasts. I did a whole week of filling in for Johnny. In fact, I had an interview with Tracy Park yesterday. Go to kabc.com and give that a listen. It's the News Blitz with Randy Wang on KABC.